Welcome, everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, we will have a prayer led by Councilman Schreiber, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, we humbly come before you to ask for your blessing. Father, help those in our troubled world through your suffering. May humanity be granted peace. Please guide us in this chamber. We may reach resolution through conscious deliberation.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I will now call to order the Monday, April 4th, 2022 City Council Meeting. This is also available virtually with the link on our agenda at JeffersonCityMo.gov. And there's also call-in participation available. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Hensley.
Present.
Kemna.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Schreiber.
Spencer.
Here.
Spicer.
Present.
Boat.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'm moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. We have an honor to give this evening. We get to recognize Fire Captain Buck Protsman for 25 years of service to the Jefferson City Fire Department. Would like to invite Buck to the podium along with Chief Schofield. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is our distinct pleasure tonight to recognize Dirk, or as we all know him affectionately, Buck Protsman. Buck has had a long and notable career as a first responder in our community. Having previously been a Cole County firefighter on March 17th, 1997, he joined the ranks of the professional firefighters with the Jefferson City Fire Department. Buck was quickly promoted to fire driver in May of 1999, and then in July of 2017, he was selected to serve as fire captain. Throughout his career with the fire department, Buck has served with enthusiasm and dedication. He has always been willing to answer the call and work extra shifts. He is known for that, in fact, always willing to work extra shifts. Buck, on so on behalf of the Jefferson City Fire Department, I want to thank you for 25 years of steadfast service, and we wish you the very best as you move on to this next chapter of your life. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Buck. I know you have someone special there with you. Would you like to say a few words into the microphone here? That way we can...
This is my wife, Pam. Without her, I would not have been able to work here a week, much less for 25 years. She's been my rock and my support all through this, and she's been a big supporter of the fire department and always helping out at various functions and stuff. And I'm very proud to introduce Pam Protsman. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Buck and Pam, and we know how important that families are to our firefighters and their families and friends and support, so we sure appreciate you as well, Pam and Buck, for 25 years to the fire service and to Jefferson City Fire Department. We sincerely appreciate what you have done in giving to the citizens and keeping our community safe, and it means a lot, and we wish you all the best, and we're happy to honor you this evening.
So dedicated that our daughter, when she was born, he was on duty because he was on...
Wow.
...time and didn't want to miss, didn't get in trouble. And Chief, you said, "Get in my car and you go to the hospital right now."
Wow, that is dedication, for sure. That's for sure. Well, congratulations. We're very happy for you. I know we'll be recognizing you, I believe, next Monday as well, so we'll... But we want to recognize you this evening with a special key to the city. So with that, we'd love to have you come forward, and we'll present this. And the next item we have is April is Fair Housing Month, so I'd like to invite Kay LaHoy, President of the Jefferson City Area Board of Realtors. She also has with us Donna Stone from the Board of Realtors and some others representing. I think it's Donna's birth... Is it your birthday today, too? Happy birthday, Donna. Yeah, right, exactly. Well, we have a special proclamation here that I'll read, and then we'd love to have you give us information about Fair Housing Month. So whereas April 11th, 2022 marked the 54th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familial status and handicap, and whereas the law encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens, and whereas the City of Jefferson, as well as the Jefferson City Area Board of Realtors, are committed to highlight the fair housing law of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure every American of their right to fair housing. Therefore, I, Kari Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, do hereby resolve that April 2022 is Fair Housing Month and beginning a year-long commemoration of the U.S. Fair Housing Law in Jefferson City, and urge all citizens to wholeheartedly recognize this celebration throughout the year. So congratulations, and thank you for all that you do to promote fair housing. And Donna, if you want to come up and... Donna can get a picture, and then we'll have you go to the podium and tell us about this month. And if you want to let us know what you have going on, and we also have the... Okay. The official photographer. Okay. And it's also the Fair Housing Poster Contest, so we'll do some recognitions for that, but if you'd like to share with us what you have going on for the month, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Kayla Hoy. I am 2022 President of the Jefferson City Area Board of Realtors, and this is Donna Porter, our 2022 Community Outreach Diversity Awareness Chair. On behalf of the Jefferson City Area Board of Realtors, we would like to thank the mayor and city council for recognizing April as Fair Housing Month. This is our 14th year of sponsoring the poster contest. The poster contest was open to all 4th, 5th, 6th grade students within the jurisdiction of the Jefferson City Area Board of Realtors, which is Cole, Callaway, Monatah, and Osage Counties. This year's theme was "Fair Housing Makes Dreams Come True." All posters will be on display at the Capitol Mall in the J.C. Penny Wing from April 6th to the 27th. We want to thank our sponsors, Central Bank, Sharon Campbell with Missouri Farm Bureau Insurance, Community Point Bank, Flat Branch Home Loans, Midwest Title and Escrow, Monarch Title Company, River Region Credit Union, React of Jefferson City, and the City of Jefferson, and our judges, Mayor Kari Turgeon, Sarah Shifer, Executive Director of Capital Arts, and Natalie Newville, Marketing and Community Engagement Manager for Missouri River Regional Library. At this time, we'd like the winners to come forward as your name is called to receive your award.
All right, good evening, everyone. This is Donna Porter. I'd like to announce the winners. We're going to start with the 4th grade, Ainsley Wyder with Blair Oaks, honorable mention. Congratulations. Next, we have Kinsley Hunt, Blair Oaks, also 4th grade, 3rd place. Zoe Quinn with St. Joseph, 4th grade, 2nd place. And 1st grade for the 4th grade is Clara Lane, Blair Oaks. Congratulations to everyone. All right, next we'll go to 5th grade. Honorable mention is Audrey Schmitz with Inno Trail. Also 5th grade, Avery Trinkline, Blair Oaks. 2nd place in the 5th grade division, Alexis Rudolph, Holy Family in Freeburg. And 1st place for the 5th graders is Grayson Pringer with St. Joseph. Congratulations to you. Next, we have in the 6th grade, we have 3rd place, Toby Libbert, Holy Family in Freeburg. 2nd place, Emeron Daleen, sorry if I pronounce that wrong, Cole R. V., Eugene. Emera Daley. Okay, there we go. 2nd place. 1st place in 6th grade, Harper Sherry, St. Stadlos Los. Congratulations to all the winners and all your hard work. Thank you for participating.
Thank you and congratulations. I can tell you that as a judge, this was extremely difficult because they were all so good, and each one of yours, they were displayed up here. I appreciate all the work and effort that you all put into the thought and how important it is to be fair when it comes to housing, so great job to all of you. And I'll come down and take a picture. We'll have council come up here behind, and we'll get a group photo, so we would invite, of course, parents to come up and take pictures as well. So we'll do some photos now. Oh, and Donna or Kayla, did you also mention where these would be displayed so that the public can view them?
The J.C. Penny Wing, starting tomorrow, we're going to start hanging them. It should be up all month.
Right, well, we sure appreciate everybody being here tonight. It's always good to have a full council chambers with everybody, so congratulations again. The next item we have is item five, the ARPA Funds Discussion and Public Comments. So we will start with Mr. Kroll to give us a brief overview, and then we will invite our public comment and discussion.
So the purpose of tonight was to discuss the desired use of the American Rescue Plan funds that the city has received. Oftentimes, we will refer to that as ARPA. We received additional input from the public at a previous meeting, and tonight, I understand, council also wanted to receive some additional comments. There are no definitive decisions that have to be made tonight. The final rule is effective, was effective, April 1st, 2022. Generally, funds must be used for costs incurred after March 3rd, 2021. Funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and expended by December 31st, 2026. I provided an overview of the ARPA Fund projects and your packets. I would like to note that we anticipate receiving $7,586,581. The county anticipates receiving about $14.8 million. Presumably, a large part of that is because Jefferson City is in Cole County. Recall that the council has already appropriated approximately $791,000 for stormwater funds. In lieu of the funding restrictions under what the previous rule, called the interim rule, was, we are now under the final rule, which has a provision for a standard allowance for cities that have received less than $10 million, and as I mentioned, we are one of those cities, so that provides a little more flexibility in how council wants to use those ARPA funds. Although we did not have any revenue loss according to the way the federal government designated revenue loss to be determined, there were some line item revenue losses that we experienced, and we also deferred some projects or didn't complete some projects and also didn't make some of the expenditures throughout the year. So essentially, we use some of that fund balance to cash flow our operations, so replenishing some of those categories would be prudent. The list of projects are a list of projects that we have talked about over a number of years, so some of them are old, and actually, some of them were already been addressed. They're not all of the city projects. Some projects we determine that are going to be paid through capital fund, sales tax, and things like that, so it's not a list of all the projects. And department directors are here to be able to discuss any specific projects that you may want to discuss. I did provide some general areas of focus, one of which is essential worker compensation, which I think is an important component, and I know it is for council as well. Several of the enterprise funds or funds such as convention and visitors bureau or convention center funds has specific projects associated with them, so I know that those projects have also experienced a revenue loss. I can appreciate the desire for transformative projects, but we have many basic maintenance and capital needs of which council is aware. So at this point, Mayor, I don't know if you wanted to have speakers come forward that maybe have new requests or additional or...
Sure, we can take some requests at this time. Are there any council questions? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank Steve and any other staff leadership who are involved in preparing the materials for us tonight. I asked a few weeks ago if staff would put together a list highlighting a handful of what they consider to be the most pressing priorities from a facility standpoint or overall city funding standpoint, particularly related to ARPA funds and things that we could potentially apply those funds to. And I, again, just appreciate the time that was spent putting together this list and bringing it to us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hensley. And Councilman Hensley is also the Chair of our Finance Committee and Budget Committee, so we'll look forward to taking this feedback and discussion likely back to either that committee or a future work session to discuss this further and make some decisions as well. Are there any members of the public here this evening that would like to comment on the ARPA funds? So you're welcome to come to the podium at this time. Seeing none, I guess we will move on to see if there's any council discussion of the items. So any council comments or discussion at this time? Councilman Lester?
So I know that the state has, Department of Development has ARPA funds, and I guess the final rules haven't been determined yet, but I know there's, in those categories, most things that we have on our list, they would match funding 50%, some of them 100%. I'm thinking particularly about the entertainment, the convention center revenue loss reduction, that's within theirs, it's 100%. So anyway, I just want us to keep in mind some of that in our discussions. I don't know when we expect those final rules to be determined, but I think that's important for our funds to go further.
Thank you, Councilman, and I'm sure that staff will make sure and be taking those partnerships into consideration if they are available.
I would just say that I'm not aware of any state guidelines yet on the use of how the state intends to use their funds. I know that there was early, there was some discussion about having, I'll call it a grant process, and in some cases, that may be competitive. Now, there are some funds, for example, through CDBG that have been identified, but absolutely that there's some of those categories or opportunities that could be used for many of these projects, too, depending on the guidelines that go along with that funding.
And we are talking also about partnering with the county whenever possible. A couple of those items that have been discussed at previous Finance Committee meetings include the 911, which Mr. Kroll has submitted to the county for partnership, along with the burn building, after Councilman Spencer has also mentioned that item. So a few of these things, maybe also partnerships with the county. And for those that might not have seen, we did have several speakers at the last meeting, so all of that information is documented, and council has that already. So we will review that and bring that forward to either a work session or however Councilman Hensley decides to proceed the further discussion. Anything else this evening on this item? Councilman Lester?
I'd also like to say that I think body cameras for police and the communications, up-to-date communications ability by police and fire, I think those are things that are very important. We've discussed them a lot. It's something both police and fire and the community itself has expressed a lot of interest and support for. I think we need to fund those as soon as we can.
Mr. Kroll?
And I did, like I said earlier, all the projects that the city has on the different lists of discussion aren't on this particular ARPA funding list, but that particular one is for the particular reason that you just noted, and that is, I know that there was some discussion, most recently at Public Safety, where there was at least an interest in thinking about, talking about being able to fund that earlier, so an option may be to use the ARPA funds to go ahead and pay for that now, and then perhaps look at ways to reimburse from Public Safety sales tax money when that does materialize. I also want to mention, I did leave a project off that you had mentioned earlier, and I apologize for that, and that was Solar for Fire Station Number Two.
Thank you. And then also the essential worker compensation, which is also covered in there. I know there's been a lot of discussion of that being a priority as well, and would appreciate that as continuing to be a priority. Any other discussion on this agenda item?
So I had a question.
Yes.
So one of the things is about lump payment for loggers, and so I know if we make a lump payment, maybe not full amount, but some, there's some reduction in going forward and yearly, what we'd have to pay is, do we have any information about how much that's going to affect going forward, how much less we would pay each year?
I think Gail did, and I don't have that. I don't know, Sheila, if you have any of that piece? Yeah. In the scheme, from an annual budget point of view, it's not a significant amount of money reduction, but the, you know, that's an amount that does accumulate over a period of time, and so being able to upfront that would bring that down. So we'll get that, that specific number, but... And I don't remember offhand. Do you remember offhand the fire and police contribution on loggers? I don't remember. We'll get that and figure out the impact for that. Gail, we'll leave it. We'll get it.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Councilman Spencer?
I have did a Google survey that has been very enlightening as well, and I've got over 100 participants as of today. Their sentiment is pretty much infrastructure-related, so I hope that we can take that into account as far as the data of what community has spoken about as well. So look forward to having further discussions on that.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Okay. Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yeah, it's something, it was brought to my attention today that downtown could use some, I think it was new hangers or baskets, and I believe there was like some sort of match, and so I was just asked to put that on the list. I think it would cost $300,000 total, but if downtown did some fundraising and they got up to the $150,000, it would only be $150,000 for us. So that's something just to put on the list.
And that's for flower, the hanging baskets? Is that what that was?
Yeah, for the hanging baskets and beautification.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? All right, we will look forward to continuing this at future meetings, and Councilman Hensley will keep us informed as to when that will be.
And I just want to make clear, I'm happy to sort of be a point from a council perspective because of my chair positions, but I don't want to give the impression that I am attempting to single-handedly control how we're having these meetings. Of course, everyone is welcome to make suggestions, either offline or in these meetings or anytime. So I just wanted to make that very clear to everyone at the dais and in the audience. So thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. I know in the past, we had tried to settle on a date for a work session, and I think it was good to do it in this forum where the public can see it very clearly, and the whole point is to have it as clear and transparent and open for public comment and to see that discussion is open as possible. So this is a good forum, and then as we get into the, digging into the details, maybe a work session may make more sense, we can actually talk longer about it as well. So we appreciate your lead on that. Anything else on that? Okay. And item six, we have no public hearings. Item seven, no appointments this evening. Item seven or eight, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests, none this evening. Announcements by mayor, council, and staff. Our committee meetings are listed on JeffersonCityMo.gov on the calendar along with the agendas. We'll go through each committee. Councilwoman Wiseman, administration?
Yes, we have a meeting tomorrow morning at 7:30 a.m., and I don't recall what room...
Okay, we... Oh, Boone Bancroft, we believe.
There we go. Boone Bancroft.
Okay. Is that, or Wednesday, the 6th? Okay.
I don't know what day it is.
That's what happens when you turn 40, I think you did at the last council meeting. That's okay.
You're really railing on the ages tonight.
Sorry, I can't help it. So administration, Wednesday. Finance, Councilman Hensley?
No update tonight, thank you.
Okay. Public Safety, Councilman Schreiber?
Announced at the last meeting, the public safety meeting will be April 28th, 7:30 a.m. in the police department training room.
Thank you. Public Works and Planning, Councilman Fitzwater?
Got some scheduling conflicts, so we may not have a meeting in April. We may have to double up in May.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of announcements. Wanted to mention that Kay Stoffer recently retired from Jefferson City Police Department, and she had a retirement celebration on Friday, and I believe Councilman Schreiber made a presentation to her, so thank you for doing that. We have invited her to Kemna, and Kemna, thank you both for presenting. That Kay has been a longtime face at the police department, and she will be greatly missed. We have invited her to come to a council meeting, so hopefully she'll be able to come. We can recognize her here as well. And also announcing, as a reminder, that tomorrow is Election Day, so please vote. There's a very important wastewater ballot issue, so we would appreciate everybody voting tomorrow. Again, the wastewater bonding issue is on there, along with the school board and two council seats, so keeping in mind... So keeping in mind to vote. And is there any other, are there any other council announcements? All right. And item 10, nothing from Lincoln this evening. Item 11, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. And each speaker will get five minutes. And we'll start with Mr. Dennis Morrissey to speak on Bill 2021-93. Welcome.
Appreciate your time this evening. I wanted to speak a little bit about more of the funding of this bill or the amount of money that's involved. I think city government should not be in the business of real estate and losing money. And that seems to be what's happening with these projects. There are taxes, are free years and arrears on some of these properties. And that leaves some other options for what to do with them, how to get them, how to acquire them. Not sure why we have to buy them. They could go through the normal delinquent tax sale process. Be sold on courthouse steps. Someone would pay what the property is worth and not an overinflated amount. Would cost us a lot less dollars and not have to own the property. The process of buying homes, these rundown homes isn't working. Housing authority buys the properties based on a court order appraisal. Apparently, the appraiser doesn't do a very good job because the properties don't sell for anywhere close to what they're appraised for. City has the housing authority acquire the properties. They put in more money to fix them up or board them up. They try to sell them. They aren't selling for anywhere close to even what they're appraised for, let alone the extra costs that are put into them. Then on top of that, we go along with new owners of the property. Sometimes come back and ask for property tax abatements, which we give them, and it just costs taxpayers more money. I think we should be looking at someone talking to the courts about the appraiser that's used. Because obviously, we didn't even learn from the first round of when we bought these properties. Second round now, surely we can get them to do a better job on valuing the property. We should consider going through the normal tax sale process or tax sale procedures, selling the properties on the courthouse steps. Let someone buy them, let someone else incur the costs. We wouldn't have to appropriate all this money we're talking about. Another option would be to just shore up the houses and bill the owners. I think we've done some of that. File a lien, wait for the property to sell, or garnish the income of the property owner. Again, this way, when the property is sold, we may get some money back. City doesn't have to, or the city housing authority doesn't have to buy the property or own it. It would have to be in the real estate business. Wouldn't have to use tax dollars, pay inflated property, tax their prices for the property. This process, what it does is bails out, hurts the people who do pay the property taxes and bails out the people who don't pay them because they benefit from the higher price too. They don't need to own the property or be in the business of real estate. Those taxpayers don't want to use or lose tax dollars on these ill-fated purchases and sales. Tax dollars should be spent frugally and sensibly. Government's job is to provide service to the taxpayers. Losing, using or losing almost 600,000 on this project seems to be way more than we should be doing. Please keep government out of the real estate business and don't own any of this funding this evening. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Next, we have, oh, Councilwoman Ward?
I, thank you. I think you made some very valid points. And I do have a question for you, Ryan. Is it correct that it's four years of delinquent taxes before a property can be taken?
Three.
Is it three? I think at the third year, it seems like she always, the property owner always pays one year and then she's two-year. It's just, okay. That's what I was thinking. Right. Okay. And that's never happened with any of the properties? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Holly Stitt to speak on the same bill, 2021-93. Welcome.
Mayor, city council members, city staff, I just want to thank you for taking the time to meet with us after the last council meeting and helping us put in the substitute, which will allow us the time to navigate this going forward in the future while keeping the money available for progress if it passes. So I'm hopeful. I would like to encourage that the dialogue stay open in between the HPC and we get structural engineers to truly assess it, that are non-city staff, structural engineers to assess these buildings before we're doing. And just keep the dialogue going because I think that's the benefit for both our community, Capitol Avenue, and our city. I'd also like to recommend in the future that perhaps these conversations happen before they hit the council floor. Because had that happened and we'd had these meetings prior, then maybe there would be a lot less stress on some of the people who came and talked, some of the people who spend a lot of money on that avenue, and some of the people that are sitting behind the benches over there. But I want to thank you very much for at least listening to us and, and working forward of trying to come up with a good solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Spencer?
Thank you for being here tonight. Just, just a quick question. Where would the funding come from for the independent structural engineer to make their assessment?
I think, I'm not going to speak for them. I'm the vice president. But we've been working on ways to not only come up with, for the Historic City of Jefferson and different grants that might be available for that, to try to save these, but also to come up with some ways that we can maybe help get some developers in there on these properties. It just came really fast, so we weren't quite there. But I think that there's ways, like giving us a little bit of time to figure that out either in some way, shape, or form. It may or may not happen, but at least we've been trying to work for, towards that. So having a little bit of time will help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Stitt. Now we have Donna Dietz. Welcome.
Turned to the city council. Sorry. As most of you know, I'm president of Historic City of Jefferson. I'm also chairperson for the Historic Preservation Commission, which is part of the city's volunteer advisory boards. HCJ's executive director, director is actually on the Zoom connection tonight. And I know she sent you an email earlier today outlining our position on this. First, after meeting with city officials, HCJ does support the passage of the substitute bill for 2021-93 to appropriate the 575,000 for the acquisition and possible demolition of the dangerous buildings. We appreciate the additional language in that section too because we have serious concerns about how the city will determine which of those buildings are demolished and which, if any, will be offered for demolition. After years of neglect, we realize not all of them are going to be able to be saved. However, there's others like 401 and 413 East Capitol that are unique. They're historically valuable because of their architectural features and who lived there and the stories behind them. But we also need to bring to the council's attention that we had to set up a meeting after the last council meeting to find out what was going on, to get the details. And we found out that two years ago, there was a 353 corporation set up to be able to obtain these buildings. We had no knowledge of that. That's two years that we messed around with the housing authority and tried to find developers for something that was still pending. And developers tend to want to get moving on stuff rather than sitting and waiting. None of this information was shared with Historic City of Jefferson, nor with the city's own Historic Preservation Commission. And that's something that we really need to have earlier. We need to know. We need, the commission needs to be involved in some of those kind of things. That's what you set us up to do. And we want to make sure that that happens. And there's a real partnership between HPC, the city that is part of that, and the Historic City of Jefferson. We understand the restoration costs on some of these are high. But there are developers who look at this as our history, as what the architectural symbols are there, who live there. 401 is an example. General Daniel McIntyre, Attorney General Daniel McIntyre lived there and his family and this history that went with it. As one of the oldest cities in the state, we really need to think about how we keep the integrity of those historic buildings and how we keep the integrity of our own historical stories that Jefferson City is there to tell. We want to urge the city council, city staff to utilize their commissions to help us participate and be local partners in the process so that we know ahead of time what's coming, what's going on, and how we can help benefit it. Holly pointed out, HCJ has been looking at grant opportunities that we can get structural engineers. Rachel and I have been talking from city staff perspective, how we can use grants money to get city, or to get engineers in there to actually look at these buildings because we really don't know what a lot of them are and what a lot of them will take to redevelop. And it's encouraging you all to have that opportunity, to give us the opportunity to be participatory in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Spencer?
And thank you for coming tonight as well. I share in your frustration that there seems to be a lack of focus in how we communicate with volunteer boards and commissions to city departments. And I would appreciate any suggestion that you might have, being that you're a.
Oh, we'll give you a whole list.
I anticipate, look forward to seeing that. So again, I share in that frustration and appreciate you giving your time tonight. And thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Dietz. I have Steve Viley. And Steve also has a slide, I believe, to show.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to come again. And Steve Viley, I have property that on, at 512 East Capitol Avenue, in the next block from the 400. I wanted to thank the group, the council and mayor for the dialogue and briefing that took place after the last council meeting. I thought that was a good move. That was great. I was not party to that, but I know that the HCJ people were very grateful for the opportunity to learn a lot more and to discuss this with you. You know, Mr. Morrissey was talking about, said that the city should not be in the real estate business. And, and that's probably true. He also mentioned that we should be involved in more of a normal process. Boy, would it be great to be in a normal process. This has been just a train wreck for the last 25 years or more. And, you know, finally, things are happening. We're glad to see that. The only other thing I wanted to mention and why I brought that slide, I know, Mayor, I talked to you at one point about this particular property. This is 401 East Capitol. And Donna just mentioned that property. As you can see, the windows, they are boarded up on the lower side. The windows are, are not boarded up on the second story. It would sure be nice while things are in limbo here to try to save that building and perhaps at least eliminate the extra water that's coming in through the windows. So this particular property, I really hope, there's a number of them, of course, that we'd like to see safe. This one in particular, as you're coming down East Capitol Avenue from the Capitol area, you know, this is the first one you see on the left that really gets into the, the historic properties in the 400, 500, 600 block. And this used to be a jam on the corner. I remember a big political consulting firm was in there 40 years ago, and it was just, you know, a very fine building. It's a shame to see what's happened here. But 401 is one I would really hope that we are able to keep. 413, I think, is another one that you're aware of and, and had others if possible. So again, thanks for letting us talk with you about it, for understanding our position and for communicating with us.
Thank you, Mr. Viley. And if, since it's not our typical practice to board up the upper story, if, if that were to be done, is that a council initiative or directive from council? Or how would that be made? And I don't know who I'm directing to necessarily. Planning or law or could get back to us with that answer?
Yeah, we'd have to get back to you with that answer.
I can tell you this, that I, I had raised this issue before on Ivy Terrace on the second floor. And I called it to the attention of someone on city staff. And the next day, the upper story windows were boarded up. So it has been done before.
No, Councilwoman Ward has brought it up on this particular one and some others. And we've had that discussion and the answer's been that it's typically the first floor. So I'd like to know what it would take if that were to be done during this.
Yeah, I don't think it's codified. So I mean, that's really a staff initiative we can do. We do the boarding for security purposes. I think typically, I thought we would go up and do some of the structure upstairs. So we'll, we'll talk about that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Viley.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that we missed for presentations? We cover everyone, anyone online? Okay. Thank you. Next, we have item 12, the consent agendas, their motion to approve.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
And any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 13, bills introduced, 2021-94.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Jefferson City Police Department, amending the 2021, 2022 annual budget and authorizing the expenditure of such funds.
Captain Wildy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As part of our quest to become a nationally accredited law enforcement agency, we've identified a very important first step down that path. And that is to have a current, updated, and legally defensible policy and procedure manual. We do have a current procedure manual, but there are updates that need to be made, and they need to be made regularly based upon state and federal legislation that goes through. What we're requesting is to get a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $48,556.39 from our Drug Forfeits or Justice Funds line item for the purchase of Lexipol. Lexipol is a nationally recognized policy and procedure manual for law enforcement and fire, public safety management team. And they will come in and help us, assist us in writing that manual. Very collaborative effort. And it should be noted, noted also that they are a partner with Midwest Public Risk, which is the city of Jefferson's insurance provider. So they also make sure that those are not just legally defensible, but risk, risk averse policies that are implemented. So.
Thank you. Any questions? 2021-95?
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Jefferson City Police Department, amending the 2021, 2022 annual budget and authorizing the expenditure of such funds.
Captain Wildy?
Thank you. Again, Madam Mayor, we're asking for approval from the Animal Shelter Donation Fund of a supplemental appropriation of $33,000, $31.25 that would go towards the purchase of five mobile data terminal computers in the animal control officer's vehicles, as well as the electronic, electronic ticketing printer and software that would accompany that MDT.
Any questions? All right, thank you. 2021-96?
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Apex Incorporated in the amount of $445,850.25 for the Douglas Davis Stormwater Project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. So clerk indicated this is Stormwater Project over off Douglas and Davis area of the city. They moused a little over $445,000. Of that, about $124,000 is grant funds administered through Missouri DNR. That area experienced some flooding back in 2016 and probably likely before that as well. And there's a lack of a stormwater system in the area, and this would. And there's a lack of a stormwater system in the area, and this would remedy that.
Any questions? Councilman Spencer?
Mr. Marash, what's the timeline on that project as far as time of start and time of completion?
Yeah, once approved, you know, the contractor would have to obtain its materials, but we anticipate, you know, one construction season here.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Right, bill's pending, 2021-90.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule J, parking prohibited by the modification of the east side of Buena Vista.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. And again, as clerk indicated, that this would prohibit parking on the east side of Buena Vista, as noted in the bill. And this request went through our Transportation and Traffic Commission. They recommended approval.
Thank you. Any questions or council deliberation? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Boat?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2021-91.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule J, parking prohibited by the addition of one space on the east side of West Circle Drive.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Again, as clerk indicated, this is a parking removal for one space on the east side of West Circle Drive, just south of North Circle. Parking in that location creates somewhat of a sight distance issue. The issue went through Transportation and Traffic, and they recommended approval.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation, discussion? Councilman Fitzwater?
I was just gonna commend you for the additional information you sent us. Thank you very much. It kind of helped clarify it, so I appreciate that.
Certainly.
Is that our timer? It's not?
There are ticking sound as well. Right.
Okay. All right. Just making sure we don't need to take any other action. Okay. So I forgot where we were, but I think it was questions or, we're ready. Okay. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yeah, I also wanted to mention, thank you for the comments. I spoke to one of the commissioners that seemed a little bit more accurate about what happened at the council, or at the commission meeting. And so I'll be supporting the bill, and I wanted to thank you again for that.
Thank you for the thorough response. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Boat?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2021-92.
An ordinance repealing Chapter 25, Article 3 of the Jefferson City Code and enacting in lieu thereof a new chapter, Article 3, relating to the urban redevelopment corporations law.
Mr. Mullman?
Thank you. This bill would amend the city code as it relates to procedures for approval of Chapter 353 projects. So currently, we have procedures that are of questionable applicability to the way we do things now using our urban redevelopment corporation. So back in the 80s, the typical mode of redevelopment using Chapter 353 urban redevelopment corporations was a redevelopment, urban redevelopment corporation that was controlled by a developer. This was the model of redevelopment using this tool through the 80s. The City of Jefferson did one project that we can find in the 80s, and then really did not use Chapter 353 for the next 30 years. Back in 2020, the city council established a urban redevelopment corporation that is controlled by the city. And this is more in line with how urban redevelopment projects are now done in the state where the corporation is controlled by the city, the city council. And then the developers, as they come in, utilize the in-place urban redevelopment corporation to do the redevelopment projects. And so what this bill does, it recognizes the procedures under state law for approval of Chapter 353 corporations, and essentially only speaks where the state statute requires the city to speak, and that is particularly the date, the amount of notice that is given on the public hearing process. So a public hearing is mandated by state law, but for whatever reason, the state law says in the city, you go ahead and say how long that notice period is. So this bill replaces a lengthy procedure that is, appears to be inconsistent with state law, and replaces it with a, just kind of the necessary elements that state law identify as being required of a city to chime in on. So I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mullman. Any questions? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Boat?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes, 2021-93.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the fiscal year 2022 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the general fund.
Mr. Mullman?
Thank you. This bill would supplementally appropriate $575,000 for demolition and acquisitions in the area of East Capitol redevelopment area. There is a substitute that has been attached.
Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to enter the substitute, and then I'd like to speak at the appropriate time.
Okay. So we have a substitute for 2021-93, substitute number one. So is there a motion, or I take that as a motion to?
To adopt.
Adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
And any further discussion? This will just be simply to adopt the substitute? Okay. Roll call, please.
Just to adopt?
Yes, just to adopt, then we'll take it up. We'll do roll call to adopt the substitute.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Boat?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
The substitute passes, so we'll take up 2021-93 now as substituted. Councilman Fitzwater?
Yes, thank you very much. And as I start, thank you to the individuals that come in and spoke, Mr. Viley and Ms. Dietz. Mr. Viley did send me a very nice email after the meeting thanking us for opening this discussion up, and yet I think it's a good example of how government ought to work. You know, I share Councilman Spencer's frustration that hopefully we can do this better next time, that there's more information shared. I would say that we did discuss this issue at Public Works, so there was some public input, but obviously, it's not at the council level. I mean, we felt like we'd had some very good discussions. We got recommendations from our staff, but I think when we can get public input, especially on a critical issue like this, so I thank very much the individuals that came and spoke two weeks ago. And, you know, I indicated that night, I did have an opportunity. The organization sent a letter, I guess, an email to all of council. I called Ms. Green today and thanked her for the letter. I told her that we don't often get organizations or people that call us and say, you know, we have looked at your intentions, and, you know, we want to work with you. And, you know, I think they will do a very good job of holding us accountable. I would say that the clarification in the language in the substitute, and I'm only speaking from myself as we were looking at this at Public Works and as we pushed it forward, seems to clarify more what I thought the intent of the original ordinance was. I think this does a much better job. I mean, we certainly felt like these were the steps that we'd have to go through. I mean, there's other people on that committee, and they can speak for themselves, but I think this does a much better job of kind of outlining the process. And it's not, we approve it, and it gets implemented tomorrow. There's a lot of steps that have to go through, but I think this streamlines the process. I walk that avenue all the time, as I know a lot of people do. And I just hate to see these beautiful old homes just rotting while we've got, while we've got an opportunity to hopefully that we can speed up the process where appropriate, I think, as has been indicated, and they both indicated, that there may be some that have passed that point of no return. I indicated last time, I'm not a structural engineer, so, I mean, we need professionals to assist us, but if we do get to the point where we have to make that decision, we thought it was important to have the funds to be able to do it in a very efficient manner. So I think with the partnership and the cooperation, I think we can do something very exciting for this community. We are spending a lot of time on Capitol Avenue, all the way from downtown, hopefully to the prison here pretty soon. And, you know, that's a very critical area. So I appreciate all the input, again, the emails. I read every one of them. I appreciate the people that took time, and I appreciate the people that took time to come down and meet and get a little bit more clarification on what this council is trying to do. And again, I think the city is better when we're all involved, and it's a partnership. Maybe the Missouri Senate will be watching, and they can learn how to work on tough issues together too. But I appreciate, and Mr. Mullman has done a great job of helping us kind of clarify what we're doing. So I wholeheartedly support the substitute, and I hope council will as well.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater, and agree. And thanks to council and staff for the work on the substitute. Any other discussion? Councilman Schreiber?
Our whole intent from the beginning is that we have a positive outcome for Capitol Avenue. You know, I worked over there for many, many years, walked by there as have other people, had a lot of discussions with, stopped by Mr. Viley's any number of times and discussed things with him. And this process has been going on for over 20 years, well over 20 years. So it's one of those situations where, as we stated and has been stated here tonight, some of those structures probably be very difficult to do anything with them. But some of them are certainly beautiful enough architecturally and historically that we should look into it. The one thing I don't want to see happen is I don't want to see there be a delay for another 10, 15, 20 years. So, you know, every, I made the comment at the last council meeting, every time we have a storm, every time we have a snow load, every time we have anything weather-related, not to mention the other problems that we know have been occurring up there, then it threatens those structures and Capitol Avenue. So I'm certainly in favor of us going ahead and passing the substitute bill here. I think we need to move forward. I thank the city staff and Mr. Mullman for meeting with our guests that are here this evening and some other people. But I do not want to see time pass because it makes me sad, quite honestly, to see it happen. So if we end up where there are individuals or groups that are interested in doing some renovation and saving the structures, then we need to move forward with that as well because otherwise, they'll just sit, and we won't have accomplished anything. So thank you for your time, and I hope we can move forward with this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ward?
I would just like to share that I'm grateful for this supplement also. I know in the past, years ago, you know, it seemed like the intent was to save a historic structure, and there may have been a promise, but then that was broken, and we've lost some significant historic structures in our city. So I'm grateful to see this in black and white. I'm very grateful to Historic City of Jefferson for being good stewards of their mission to help protect and preserve our historic structures. I'm also grateful to them for coming forward and partnering with the city more to help bring forth preservation efforts. And also to help in other ways. They donated money to our incentive program in 2019, late 2019, early 2020, to help in our down payment assistance program to provide $5,000 match funds for individuals to buy in our old town. And I would just like to commend Historic City of Jefferson for partnering with us and moving this forward, and the city staff for taking the time to meet with them. Dave, thank you for answering their questions they had after the meeting, the follow-up. And I think from all those discussions and the time, bringing everybody to the table to discuss this, that was a good result with the supplement. I do have one question. How much time do you think will be allowed for this process to occur? I know there's a lot of shifting pieces, and we'll have to hopefully get a structural engineer in there, and that can maybe take a little time, but-
That would ultimately be up to the city council. And so I don't think we zeroed in on a particular timeframe. I think there's probably some input that we want to gather before we do that. But ultimately, what this substitute bill does is it charges city staff to come back to the city council with a plan that would include things like, when are we gonna, you know, look at the buildings? When is an assessment gonna come to the city council? When are we gonna open up for some sort of interest period, interest gathering period? So I think those decisions are to be made. But, you know, putting time to make it fair and comprehensive, but at the same time, getting to Mr. Schreiber's point, it's time to move because if we just sit on them, we're gonna, we're gonna start losing them. So that's the balancing act that we're gonna try to figure out. So I would say that answer is to be determined.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I know it's a good balance between the law department and planning with Mr. Helmig and Ms. Senzi and their approach and working together, so appreciate that. Councilman Spencer?
Just to echo a little bit what Councilman Fitzwater stated earlier, is that I think the substitute does kind of hone in on the spirit of intent of what I think a lot of us had envisioned originally. And I think what we also need to focus on is that we're finally putting our money where our mouth is as far as prioritizing this issue. And I think it can yield a lot of benefit for the community. I think sometimes when, it can be misinterpreted by the community and the fact that sometimes when we're, when we do move forward with the process and streamline it, it might seem that we're trying to do something underhanded. And I think for all my colleagues here tonight, I think that was never the intent. And we really appreciate the opportunities when the community comes in and speaks their mind and shares their concerns. And again, it just, it just makes government better for people that we serve. So again, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Lester?
Yes, I'm very supportive of the substitute and glad we're taking action tonight. But I do want to say, I think this points out that we just don't have the tools to deal with these type of problems. I think everybody recognizes that if action was taken 10 years ago, we could have saved many more of these properties and saved our history, preserved it. I've heard people say that something must be wrong with Ms. Busher, that she let these go like this, but I think something's wrong with us that we let it go like this also. It's just, it seems like we need better tools for dealing with irresponsible property owners, and we don't have them. And I don't know if that's something that at our level we can even do, but if it's at state level, I think we need to work on that. We also, you know, had a building fall down downtown just two years ago, or a little more than that. And as far as I know, nothing's happened to prevent something like that happening again. I just think we have more discussion to do and work to do on this issue for the future. But I'm glad we're moving forward tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Lester. And I know that that is a good point, that there are a lot of state laws when it comes to property rights that we have had to definitely work within and around. And I know that the legal department has also been, we've had some discussion about some of those limitations that are already placed on us from the state law perspective. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
I do want to say, I think this points out that we just don't have the tools to deal with these type of problems. I think everybody recognizes that if action was taken 10 years ago, we could have saved many more of these properties and saved our history, preserved it. I've heard people say that something must be wrong with Ms. Busher, that she let these go like this, but I think something's wrong with us that we let it go like this also. It's just, it seems like we need better tools for dealing with irresponsible property owners, and we don't have them, and I don't know if that's something that at our level we can even do, but if it's at state level, I think we need to work on that. We also, you know, had a building fall down downtown just two years ago, or a little more than that, and as far as I know, nothing's happened to prevent something like that happening again. I just think we have more discussion to do and work to do on this issue for the future, but I'm glad we're moving forward tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Lester, and I know that that is a good point, that there are a lot of state laws when it comes to property rights that we have had to definitely work within and around, and I know that the legal department has also been, we've had some discussion about some of those limitations that are already placed on us from the state law perspective. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Boat.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 15, nothing on the informal. Item 16, Resolution 2021-31.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Flock Safety Incorporated for the ALPR services.
Captain Wildy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As part of a joint project between the Jeff City Police Department and Missouri Office of Homeland Security, we're requesting authorization to enter into a services agreement contract with Flock Safety Group for the installation of automatic license plate detection cameras and applicable software to be used to enhance the security posture for the downtown area, the Capitol complex, as well as state, county, and municipal government buildings.
Thank you, Captain Wildy. Is there a motion to approve?